Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular Planning Board meeting of July 21st, 2005. Before we begin, just a quick announcement. If anyone has a problem with hearing us, please just step to the back into their control room, and they have hearing devices for anyone who may need them. First item on the agenda tonight is the minutes, approval of the minutes from the June 16th meeting. Do I have a motion?
No, moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments, changes? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Minutes from the January 27th Planning Board work session.
Moved or approved? Ezra.
Moved and seconded. Any comments or anything? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Moving on to the public hearings. First one, A. Ports of the Planning Board acting pursuant to the Hampshire RSA 12G 13 and Chapter 500 of Peace Development Authority subdivision regulations will review and make recommendations planning board or directors of the Peace Development Authority regarding the following: Application of General Services Administration New England Region applicant for property located at 254 Corporate Drive. Where preliminary final subdivision approval is requested with the following: Having Lot Zero having an area of 30.18 acres and with continuous street frontage off Corporate Drive and the remaining land to be decreased by 30.18 acres and consisting of a portion of the trade port and lying in a zone where a minimum lot area of five acres and 200 feet of continuous street frontage is required. Said property is located in a business, in an airport business commercial district and shown on Assessor Plan 15 as Lot Four. Plot plans are on file with the Plating Department Office and identified as 20105. This was tabled at our June 16th. Do I have a motion taken off the table?
No, moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. David?
Mr. Chairman, Board members, the department has been in contact with the United States General Services Administration. They are preparing a new plot plan. It will require a new notification process, and I would expect that the board will be looking at that at your next meeting. So my recommendation is that you would table this to a time indefinite, which effectively either moves it completely off so it can be brought back if it ever needed to be, but more appropriately, you won't be seeing it again unless it's necessary.
Still moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Moving on to B, the application of Smith, Mitch, Frost Properties owner for property located at 159 State Street and Randall K. and Samantha, R.P. Peck, James and Catherine Quick, Christopher Colari, sorry, Aaron J. and Jill A. Crouse, Crouse, thank you, and Jonathan A. and Lisa Daniels and Robert, I'm going to mess that one up.
Susco.
Chris Susco, thank you. And Carrie Bean, owners property located at 147 State Street where preliminary final subdivision approval lot line relocation is requested between two lot areas having the following: Lot 46-3 is shown on Assessor Plan 107, increasing in area from 5,909 square feet to 5,624 square feet, and Lot 47-4 is shown on Assessor Plan 107, decreasing in area from 5,287 square feet to 4,761 square feet and lying in a zone where a minimum lot area of 1,000 square feet is required and no minimum street frontage is required. Said property is shown on, is, are located in Central Business B and Historic A Districts and is shown on Assessor Plan 107 as Lots 47-3 and 46-4. Plot plans are on file with the Plating Department Office and identified as 100105. This was also tabled for our June 16th. Do I have a motion taken off the table?
No, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. David?
Mr. Chairman, the department has been notified by various attorneys that are representing the various parties involved in this. The one concurrence seems to be that it should be tabled. Evidently, there is a suit that has been filed, so the parties are requesting it be tabled. I would recommend that you table it to your August meeting.
Still moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Moving on to C, the application of Michael R. Clark, owner for property located at 325 Little Harbor Road where in final subdivision approval is requested to subdivide one lot into two lots have, with the following: Lot One having 180,000 square feet, 2.42 acres, and 154.43 feet of continuous street frontage on Little Harbor Road; Lot Two having 279,000 square feet, 6.4 acres, and 151.38 feet of continuous street frontage on Little Harbor Road and lying in a, in a zone where a minimum lot area of one acre and 150 feet of continuous street frontage is required. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 204 as Lot Five and lies within a single residence A District. Plot plans are on file with the Plating Department Office and is identified as Plan 100204. Who would like to address us this evening?
Chairman, I need to recuse myself of a neighbor.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Mike Seavert with MJS Engineering. I represent Michael Clark. I have been representing him from the beginning, and I don't know, I'll go through an explanation if you need, but there hasn't been any real changes with the exception of a couple tents added or subtracted to one of these other lots, just a change in that middle lot line. Other than that, at the last meeting of March 17th, where we've got preliminary subdivision approval, there were eight items. We've responded to these eight items, and this is, what this submission gives you is that response to those eight items. And some of the changes that were made were, we've added some buffers. The buffer on the northerly side of the property, right here, along that existing house that's there, and that's, has been concurred with by the neighbor. And we've also added a buffer here along the southerly or southeastally property line, where the city's land abuts that, all the way down to where the actual existing road goes right over to the property line, so we can't really go any further there. Other than that, some of the notes have changed, and there's some deed language that I believe needs to be cleared up. And we see all of these conditions that would be pending, and we don't have any issues with any of those conditions. I can answer any other questions that you have.
Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? Seeing none? Thank you. Oh, sorry.
I have more of a question for the department. If prior Board of Adjustment approval is required for any of the activities on this, is it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is it normal and customary for those Board of Adjustment actions to be on the plan?
Yes, but in this instance, the, a determination was made with the legal department and the legal counsel for the applicant, no Board of Adjustment action is required for the subdivision.
Okay, let me just look at one thing, number six.
At an earlier time, we wondered that, but it is not required.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak two, four against this application at this time?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Tim Phoenix. I'm an attorney at Hopeful Phoenix and Gormley, and I represent the applicant. The only thing I wanted to add is, in case you needed it on the plan, the, we are going to have, at least in a deed, a permanent easement for access across the roadway here to get out to Belle Isle. I think it's probably known by everybody that that's going to be the case, but I noticed that it's not specifically stated on the plan, so if you folks need it, we will. If you don't, I'm just, just wanted you to know that we're going to have that easement for the benefit of the Belle Isle, Island itself and burdening this lot.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to speak two, four against? Agreed with me?
Good evening. My name is Marian Maflozy, and I'm sorry, I'm a director butter to Mr. Clark's property, and I didn't hear the gentleman about the buffer zone, and I would like to know if there is a 40-foot buffer zone.
If you could just point out the buffer zone on the Maflozy property?
There are a 40-foot wide and then 125 feet from each way.
Okay, and that will overlap to the 150 feet from the, not coming up from the water?
Well, the 125 feet would go down inside of that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. If you can just, just bring the microphone over so we can get it on record.
Is this one?
Yeah.
This, the 125 feet buffer from this boundary point here goes down into the 100-foot floodline buffer from the shore, from the highest observable tide line.
So basically, it will extend right down to the water line, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it will, it extends actually down to the flood line, not all the way down to the highest observable tide.
Because, because you can't do any building or anything down there?
Right.
Okay.
It overlaps, and it's 40 feet wide.
Thank you very much.
That answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to speak two, four against this application at this time? Anyone in the public? Third time, seeing none, rise, I'm going to close public hearing.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Holden, just to point out, you have a memorandum from the Conservation Commission. I'd just like to indicate that the applicant has worked rather closely with the department so that we could put a buffer in place that buffers this project from the city conservation land. I would also like to point out that these buffers are not a requirement of the subdivision, so these are really offers by the landowner to try to meet the objectives of, of the city and adjacent property owners. Additionally, I'd like to remind the board that this is a waiver of the city's street requirements, which is why it requires a two-thirds vote. And the reason we're recommending the waiver in this instance is because there will be no further subdivision of this property. You'll basically have two lots on the mainland and one lot on the island, so effectively a great deal of this area is maintained as open space. Was under those assumptions, the preliminary approval was granted now a number of months ago. I would just indicate that the eight conditions that are on it now are mostly housekeeping and are designed to keep the intent of the board that you made in your last recommendation. So at this time, the department would be recommending that final subdivision approval be granted on this application, subject to those conditions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Coker?
Just a, sort of a procedural question. You said that Belle Isle, the island itself, will not be subdivided.
Correct.
Where is that stated? Is it on the plan?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Let's see, that's part of the rationale for this process.
Okay, so by granting this, we are in effect approving a waiver?
Correct.
Okay, but, but it is based on, in, in great part, if not totally, on the fact that Belle Isle will not be subdivided?
Nor will these other two lots.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hoffley?
Just by way of another housekeeping item, I just happened to notice Note Six probably should be amended to reflect the May 17th, 2004. Excuse, not before, 2002. Flood plane maps.
That is one of the conditions.
Oh, it was.
Okay. Also, the panel number will have changed.
Right.
I need to get that.
Number seven, and the recommendations, that note number six on the plaque will be corrected to identify.
The department's having a great deal of fun catching up with all the surveyors. Okay.
More of a question for the department. If, I can understand how, how having a road waiver would be effective in a typical subdivision, but how would this affect, say, a planned unit development, where you may have cluster housing in, obviously not this year, and next year, or 30 years from now, but the road is going to service this particular island for years and years to come? Would, if someone were to propose a planned unit development, though that provides more, more power to the planning board to say no to something like that, because there's a clause that says nothing shall compel the planning board to approve a planned unit development, would that be the only thing that you could see overriding, something like that?
Well, obviously, these conditions are imposed by the board, so theoretically, another project could be presented, but the intent and by virtue of being included in the deeds is to show that this area's largely been developed per this plan, and obviously, the city's agreeing that this is an area of low intensity development where the natural resources should be protected to the extent possible, and I think you've done that.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Counselor, for any?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I understand Attorney Phoenix's comment about what might be added to the plan, or is it clarification of the statement with respect to the easement?
Very well. The road, the existing roadway on here is identified as existing paved driveway, is the driveway out to Belle Isle right now, and the existing notes on the plan identify who's going to maintain that roadway, and there will be other driveways offered to the, to the two lots here, but what it doesn't say anywhere is that Belle Isle will have the benefit of an easement over that existing paved driveway to Belle Isle. And so we're going to, I'm going to make sure that, that is in the deeds amongst Mr. Clark and these two property owners, so that whoever owns Belle Isle can at least get to it. I think it's implied, but I'm going to make it specific. I mention it only in case the board wants to, if you want to have that as a condition on the plan, I'm willing to add it.
I think it would be sensible, from a matter of housekeeping, to keep it on the plan.
So be a ninth stipulation?
Got to be a ninth stipulation.
Do we have a motion?
We, we accept that.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Can I have a motion?
Move to accept the subdivision plan as offered, with the stipulations indicated.
Second.
With the, the eight from the memo and adding the ninth?
Yep.
Thank you. Agreeable to the second?
Yeah.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'm going to call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And chair votes aye.
We also let the record show that a waiver was granted by this vote.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to D. The application of Robert and Sherry Pantinella, owners for property located at 156 Holly Lane and Matthew Fesindin, owner for property located at 581 Colonial Drive, where in preliminary and final subdivision approval, a lot line change is requested between two lots having the following: Lot 28 is shown on Assessor Plan 260, increasing in area from 6,016 square feet to 10,119 square feet and having 100 feet of continuous street frontage off Colonial Drive, and Lot 56 is shown on Assessor Plan 261, decreasing in area from 24,589 square feet to 20,119 square feet, and having 60 feet of continuous street frontage off Holly Lane and lying in a zone where a minimum lot area of fif- that be 150? 1500? Thank you. 1500 square feet and 100 feet of continuous street frontage is required. Said property is located in a single residence B districts and is shown on Assessor Plan 260 as Lot 28 and Assessor Plan 261 as Lot 56. Plot plans are on file with the Plating Department Office and identified as 130105. Who'd like to address us?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Chagman from Ambed Engineering, representing the Pantinellas and Matthew Fesindin on this application. Indeed, we have map 261 Lot 56 and map 260 Lot 28. They abut each other, but they're actually in two separate subdivisions and on two separate tax maps. The location map in the top left shows you the location of the two lots. They're joined in the back along a short common line, and the application before you is simply to convey 4,470 square feet from Lot 56 to Lot 28. The, this triangular piece here, which is a part of Lot 56, is proposed to be conveyed to Lot 28. The reason for the conveyance is a number of reasons. The first is that this area is already fenced and being used by permission, by agreement, Lot 28 is using this area by permission, and there is a fence up, so currently, the yards are being used and are working out well for the two parties. They then agreed that it made sense to come in and formalize this agreement and actually convey the fee interest in the property from map 26156 to map 26028. The staff memo indicates three stipulations. We have no problem with any of those three stipulations. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? Seeing none? Thank you, John. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak two, four against this application? Anyone in the public? Two, four against? Third time? Seeing none, rise, I'm going to close public hearing. What is your pleasure, board?
Your approval?
Second? With the three stipulations?
Yeah.
Discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. All set. Moving on to E, the application of Deer Street Associates owner and Centrix Bank and Trust applicant for property located at 165 Deer Street, where insight plan approval is requested for the addition of a covered entrance and a portico with a teller window and related paving, utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 125 as Lot 17 and 18 and lies within the sender, Central Business B and Downtown Overlay District and Historic A District.
Mr. Chairman, once again, John Chagman from Ambed Engineering, representing Deer Street Associates, the owners of the property, and George Rogers and Holly Malloy from Deer Street Associates are here tonight to answer any questions you might have, and also Centrix Bank. They are proposing to remodel the property, or a portion of the property, into a branch office, and to do so, they're going to be changing some of the exterior elements of the building. They're going to add a covered entrance to the street side of the building on the front. They're going to add a portico share and teller window on the left side of the building. They're going to restripe the entire parking lot. They're going to do some landscaping in front, re-landscape the front of the building, also landscape some areas that were recently created when the city reconstructed the Deer Street, Bridge Street, say, intersection or, or alignment, and created more of a defined entrance to the property. They're going to be screening a stairway, which is on the backside of the building. They're going to be replacing a fabric awning, also on the backside of the building, with a wood awning. We submitted three sheets. C1 is an existing conditions plan. C2 is the proposed improvements plan, and C3 shows you the proposed landscaping. The project received HDC approval. We went to the technical advisory committee and had a couple of meetings with that group. There are some stipulations brought forward to you. We are in agreement with all the stipulations. Some of the stipulations have already been addressed on the plan, specifically 5, 6, 8, 10, and 11, and we can point those out if you'd like. Request your approval here tonight, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be recusing myself in this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Richard. Mr. Hayden?
John, on the do not enter signs there in the, what I'll call the back alley, the backside of the building, I see them on the pavement in two places, and on, looks like there's a sign posted on the corner of the building closest to Maplewood. Is there a reason for not posting a sign on the corner of the other buildings? On the, the two-story wooden brick building, the 3,000 square footer? So that if you, if you left...
Not really. That's probably a good idea. We could post another sign on that building.
Yeah, I mean, unless there's some reason not to, the more we can keep people out of heading in the wrong direction in this town, the better.
Either that, or maybe place a sign somewhere, let the owner choose, either a sign on the building or a sign on a post.
Right, I was just looking for some vertical sign to alert people, an additional alert. Thanks, John.
Not a problem.
John? Just one comment. The, I notice you have the handicap space over in the six spaces that are on the other side of the, the drive-through window?
Yes.
Is it possible to move that to the six that are adjacent to the building so that they won't have to cross over the, the drive-through portion?
Well, there are...
Control those spaces on the other side?
There are currently two spaces that are...
See, those two would, I would say, would go to Lot 18, but I'm, I'm wondering if we can get that one handicap space closer to the front door, so they don't have to cross over the, the drive-through.
Well, I think it's better to spread the, the handicap spaces out through the site. As I was saying, there's two spaces here, adjacent to this area of the site. There's one in the middle of the site, and there's another one on the southwesterly side of the site, so our preference is to leave it where it is. I think it provides a good access. Yeah, they do cross the exit of the drive-through, but that traffic is not going to be heavy or traveling at any great speed, so we feel that's a good location for that spot, and it also provides some additional room for the backing up of this space across the way.
Mr. Hayden?
I, I, I kind of am leaning toward they should be, it should be on the other side, based on my own experience of trying to go across that drive-through when the coffee people are there, and no, there's not a lot of traffic, and you'd think they wouldn't be going that fast, but people tend to launch out, and they're looking down at whatever they just transacted at the window. So give me a compelling reason why it shouldn't be on the other side near the other two. I remain unconvinced.
Well, other than the reasons that I gave before, I, I really can't come up with other ones, except to say that I don't think it makes sense to concentrate the handicap spots. You want to spread them out. So if you come to the facility and you're looking for that kind of a parking space, you, if you get to this point, you come in here, realize there aren't any, you have to back up, come all the way back around. You know, it's good to have them spread out across the entire parcel and concentrate them in one area.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, the only way for them to get to that space is either come down through the, the drive-through area or have to loop back around through your, your parking lot.
The people driving there?
Yeah. To get to that space, you have to go all the way around the barn or all the way around the building. I know it's, it's proposed painted yellow stripe island, but if there's cars parked there, people aren't going to see it. I'd like to see it parked on the other side. We'll leave that one.
Mr. Sullivan? And Counselor, for any?
If, if my memory serves me right, I think on the other side of the building, the bill, Lot 18, building number 157, on, on that side is an eyeglass shop, isn't it? And you have heavy density of traffic coming and going, you have two eye doctors there that are treating patients and giving glasses and so forth, and I know I, I use that building To increase the traffic in that area, I don't know who owns these parking spaces next to the building, number 165. I don't know just exactly where their lot line goes.
These lots are going to be combined, so it'll, it'll all be one lot, actually.
In between?
Yeah, the lot in between is going to be combined, so the lots will be consolidated.
Where is the edge of the lot line?
Currently?
Right-hand side of the building for building 165?
Currently, it runs right here alongside the building.
So those parking spaces don't belong to the occupant of 165, do they?
Theoretically, no, not at this time.
Okay, well, why do you say not at this time?
Perhaps it would be helpful, John, if you showed what the proposed lot area is, with the consolidation.
Part of this application is to consolidate the lots. There's, there was some concern raised at the technical advisory committee about the fact that access to the two lots was sort of commingled and intertwined, and there would have to be cross-access easements created to ensure that people had the ability to flow around the property. As, as an adjunct to that, or instead of creating those easements, the owners are going to consolidate the two lots. So these two lots, currently, there's Lot 18, as runs along Maplewood and Deer Street, and then jogs back towards the railroad, takes a couple of jogs, runs along the railroad, actually jogs in a little bit, and then back out to Maplewood Avenue. That's Lot 18, Lot 17, starts at that line between the two lots, and then travels down along the railroad, back around out to Bridge Street, and down to Deer Street, and back up along Deer Street to this other lot.
My, my concern about exiting traffic going to Maplewood Avenue is that it's, that driveway to the rear of those buildings is pretty close to the traffic light, and the backup of traffic is going to be a disaster waiting to happen. You follow me, or...
They don't be exiting out one way.
It's a one-way-in.
One-way-in.
Talking Maplewood Avenue?
Yes.
That's one-way-in. That's in only.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yeah, I see it now. Wasn't it?
Counselor, for any?
Counselor Furney?
My question back to the handicap access would be, is the concern that if you were to add, what I see on here is a five-foot minimum buffer zone where the yellow lines are so that a wheelchair can get out of a handicap vehicle? Is the concern that if you put at least, and so you have two spots there, if you put one of them back against one sixty-five, just to the right of the building, what does that do to that parking lineage? Do you have room to pick up the half a parking space going out into the lane of traffic there? And is that one of the reasons why it isn't designed in there? Or is it feasible to be designed in there? Because I do think without a handicap parking right next to that building, it, it's the most obvious place to have one and it's the closest place to have one with the least amount of impact by other traffic. So I think I'm favorably disposed towards having one there too and I'd be curious as to your view.
Well, I would say that I feel that this spot is actually safer because right here you have traffic which is exiting and entering, okay? And to put the spot there, I don't believe provides as much safety as having it over here where it's sheltered by the sidewalks. There's a safer area here which is protected for loading and unloading. The people have to then cross over this lane, but if you put it here, they're going to have to go possibly out. This little ramp here may work so they wouldn't have to, but I think that, see this is going to be raised up. We're going to discourage people from walking. We're going to queue all the pedestrian traffic to this crossing. So I think those people that are using a wheelchair are going to be just as able to negotiate that crossing as everyone else. I think it's better to spread out the handicap spots, not just put them in one area. And if the board is going to dictate the design, then, then that, you're, you're free to do that, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Goffrey?
I may have the cart before the horse here, but I'm confused. The application says, let me see if I can come to the proper language, that we're, the site plan approval is requested for the addition of covered entrance, blah, 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 teller window. And yet we are being asked to approve this on a lot that has not yet been consolidated. It, I thought I heard John say that it, the lots will be consolidated.
Mr. Holden, could you?
Yeah, perhaps I can assist a little bit. The consolidation of lots under state law is something that can actually be done on an administrative basis. You've given that authority to Ken, or the chair and to myself as planning director.
So they're both by the same owner?
Correct.
Correct, okay. That's the missing piece of information, thank you.
Sorry, they're currently owned by the same owner.
I do have a second question. On sheet C two, directly in front of the two-story, number one sixty-five, out on the street there are some, three bars side by side. What, do you, do you see what I'm talking about on the plan? What are those symbols?
That signifies the edge of pavement, it's-
Okay, is there parking directly in front of that building?
No.
There will be no parking directly in front of the building?
There is none now and there's none proposed. The only street-side parking is further up-
Where it says metered parking.
Correct.
Yep, thank you.
Any other comments, Jim? John, just a couple more. Says I know this is going to be consolidated. I see you have snow storage in one location over by the lot seventeen building. You feel that's going to be adequate for the entire parcel?
Yes, currently that, that is what they, that's where they bring the snow. They truck it over from other parts of the parcel to that area.
John, in, in the past sometimes they have put it what is now your proposed painted yellow stripe, piled it up there before, so that's no longer going to happen. That's all going to be moved over to those two snow storage sites.
Which yellow striped area are you referring to?
Your new proposed, the yellow stripe island. The people, there's a telephone pole I think up there.
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, there used to be, there used to be an island there, or there is an island there now, so that's going to be taken out.
In the past, they have piled it there and taken out a couple of parking spaces, so that's no longer going to be the case.
Correct.
And dumpsters on the location?
They're in the central business, curb side, pick up on Monday nights.
Even for the, even for the restaurant?
I'm not sure of the answer. The restaurant have a dumpster? Oh, okay. Okay. I believe it's over in the shed area here.
Okay. We just have that marked on the plan and fenced as, as normal?
Yep.
Anyone else?
John, no change in lighting there on site?
That's a good question. We haven't really looked at the lighting. I think there's a light currently on the pole, one light. We might want to make some lighting changes to the site as we move forward.
Maybe I'll ask Mr. Holden, if that were to happen, would they come back and amend their site plan?
What you could do is indicate that they demonstrate to the department that it's dark sky friendly, is that the correct term?
Yes.
And I think that is something that's necessary.
Anyone else? Nope, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public, let's say two, four against the application at this time? Anyone in the public, two, four against this application? Third time, seeing no one rise, I'm closing public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion, at least for purposes of discussion, to approve the application with the eleven stipulations and adding a twelfth and thirteenth. The twelfth being the movement of the handicap space from, let's see if I have this correctly, from the westerly section of the number one sixty-five woods, two-story wood brick building to the other side of one sixty-five two-story brick building. That's stipulation number twelve. And then stipulation number thirteen being that the lighting on the site shall be dark skies friendly pursuant to department approval.
Is there a second?
Second. Would the maker of the motion be amenable to also add that the note around the plan where the dumpster is for the other building and that it's fenced in is our normal?
That, that can be a fourteenth stipulation.
Discussion on the motion.
Mr. Chairman?
A comment, because I want to make sure that while everybody's here, we get it right. I agree with Ray Will's comment about the lighting, but temporally speaking, I got the impression that that was not going to be done as part of the plan submitted. So if they will clarify that, if it's something that's going to come back in two years and they amend the plan, that's fine. The manner in which it was worded, we may want to just make sure that it, it gives them, that we're not going to expect with that reconstruction done on the lot, that the lighting is going to be done tomorrow, unless that is our, is ours of the board. So I just raised that, I'd ask Ray and I, you know-
As, as I, as I understand the motion, and what that would, how that would affect it is that it would throw to the department that it would be dark sky friendly. And then if this were in any way needed to be amended, like a pole was in the way of a particular access or egress, then they would bring this back as an amended site plan. But if it wasn't anything particularly pressing, then they would, we would give them the power to do that on their own.
Is that understandable by the, by the department?
Thank you, that's fine.
Okay, any other discussion, sorry, on this topic?
Mr. Chairman, just like this accessible parking has been bandied about quite a bit and I, and I share the board's opinions, and I also hear what the designer is saying, engineer is saying concerning his desire to spread the accessible parking over the entire lot. I was wondering if a compromise might be to take one of the two accessible spaces that you have adjacent to one fifty-seven and simply move that over adjacent to one sixty-five, so they're both there, you don't touch the one that you'd like to keep, but then we still provide an addition, one adjacent to one sixty-five closer to the front entrance. And I, and Ray, I don't want to, you, you follow what I'm saying?
I follow what you're saying, but I do have a, a concern. And my concern is this, is that we're, we're moving a space from one place to another to avoid them moving from, across an access or egress. And by doing what you're proposing, Rick, you, you put it, you basically put it across the, across the egress. So if one of those spaces is occupied and someone wants to go into one fifty-seven, they have to go into the handicap space at one sixty-five and then take their wheelchair or their, or their crutches across a two-lane egress access to one fifty-seven. And I would have a, as, as serious a concern about that as I would as someone going across a, a drive-through. I see where you're going with it. I was thinking that too until a comment was made about how everything is configured for someone to even access the proposed handicap space. They've got to go in, hang right at, at, at the, at the beer shop and then turn around by the little yellow T, T-bone thing and come around and then get to that space. And then, once they get out of their car, then travel across, as Ms. Hayden mentioned earlier, a, a drive-through that quite frankly, as, as much as it's got a sidewalk, I'm thinking about the psychology of the people in that drive-through too.
Well, but what John is saying is that you, you still, with the two spaces over there adjacent to one fifty-seven, there's always going to be the potential that someone utilizes those, would want to use one of those for one sixty-five.
Yeah, but I'm also thinking that there's two for a building that's seventy-two hundred square feet and one for a building that's three thousand. It would seem typical. And if you do, there is always going to be that danger, there's going to be the danger that they're all filled up and you have to use a regular space.
I think that might be three thousand on the first floor and then it's two stories, so it's a six thousand square foot building.
The other thing I was thinking, are we dabbling about one parking space? What's, why not just add another handicap parking space? Is that a terrible thing to, to, to propose?
Let me just-
Does it affect the parking calculations?
Let me just comment on one thing here. This is the central business district, so technically they're not required to provide any parking if they pay into the fee, you know, into the intermodal parking credit. I think the applicant has more than met their obligation for what's a relatively simple project to install a bank in the building. We effectively brought this entire lot into compliance and I think it's good that we're trying to figure out where one handicap space goes. But in a way, given the central business district, the way it's developed and the improvements that are being made there, perhaps just keep it in perspective wherever, wherever it is that the board feels it should go on.
Just the, just a question on the current motion, if it's possible. So the motion would be to move this space, the handicap space here, over here?
Yes.
And then provide a drop zone for that space because you'd need to. And then I'm assuming that these, the, the handicap space and the other space would then become two spaces. Is that correct? That's acceptable.
Yeah, because you'd have the drop zone.
Yep. They have to be widened to eight and a half or nine, but-
John, if, if the motion on the floor relative to that space was approved here, is, is the route of travel after you get out of your handicap space, out of your car in that handicap space, is it as good on that corner of the building as it is on the other corner of the building by the drive-through? You know, in terms of route of travel, do you think?
As good? I think so, yes. I don't think you're making it less safe by moving the spot over there. Because there is a, there, there is a ramp area here so that they don't have to go out into the driveway.
Thank you.
Counselor Furney?
A little more minutia. If the drop zone, now that I knew, I have a new phrase, is to the northern side of that parking space that we're talking about?
Yep, over here would be on the southern side.
It would be on the southern side so that you could utilize that area.
And then be right at the ramp.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the motion? So now I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The chair votes aye. Just for clarification on that, on that last one, John? Just for clarification too, for bookkeeping, we were also having that do not enter sign was going to be added, so really I guess there's fifteen stipulations. Are we comfortable with that, board?
That's agreeable to the maker of the motion.
Okay, that was our intent. Okay. Okay, moving on to our final, final public hearing tonight. The application of Walmart Real Estate Business Trust and Joker's Realty One LLC owners for Walmart Stores Inc., applicant for property located at twenty-four sixty Lafayette Road where an amended site plan approval is requested for the expansion of the existing one hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-two square feet Walmart store to one hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred square foot Walmart super center with related paving, utility, landscaping, drainage and associated site improvements. Public hearing was held on the applicant's request to amend stipulation twelve of June sixteen, two thousand and five site plan approval. Said property shown on assessa plan two eighty-five is lot sixteen, one and two and lies within the general business district. David?
Mr. Chairman, I'm able to indicate to you that this request has been withdrawn by the applicant. No action is necessary on the part of the board. Your conditions and your approval from the last meeting stand is stated by the board.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to three, city council referrals and requests. The request to review archaeological matters and historic sites in the city.
I can speak to that. This is to the board as a city council referral from an inquiry by Sean Rafferty. We did notify Sean Rafferty by letter back in June that this item would be on the agenda tonight and we're seeking public input from it concerning whether or not our regulations should be amended to add archaeological investigation of properties prior to giving approvals or issuing a building permit. There were several questions asked. Do we currently have regulations concerning that? And there are regulations when projects are under federal dollars and Cindy will stick at that probably. So I guess probably just open it up to see if anybody's here giving their comments, whether the city should go in that direction to add archaeological investigations or digs or whatever you call them to the process, site review process.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to make comment?
Yes, I am the previously referred to Sean Rafferty. And my concern primarily, I suppose, was the Eagle Photo Building and the adjacent parking lot. Because for me, that was the, a site that probably had not been glanced at as far as what may be in the ground there. The ground, as we can see today, from the, the digging that's going on there now, is probably only, I don't know, was probably only a few feet until you hit the granite which they're trying to take out of there now to put the new buildings in. As far as I know, the Eagle Photo Building, a part of that goes back to the, the building that was probably original, the original building on that site back in the, in the seventeen hundreds. It was the residence of Hunking Wentworth, who died in seventeen eighty-two. He was the son of a, of Royal Governor John Wentworth, the brother of Royal Governor Bennet Wentworth, and the uncle of John Wentworth, the last royal governor of the province of New Hampshire, who fled Portsmouth for, I think, I think Alzahels maybe initially and then Boston and then up to Nova Scotia at the time of the revolution. Hunking himself was the local chairman of the- Um, Hunking himself was the local, um, chairman of the Committee of Safety in Portsmouth, and Paul Revere came to Portsmouth and, um, advised the Committee of Safety and, uh, Hunking Wentworth, that, uh, he had received word from Boston that the British were sending reinforcements to Fort William and Mary, uh, currently Fort Constitution in, in Newington, uh, sorry, in Newcastle. Um, and a couple days later, um, a number of the local patriots, uh, John Sullivan and Langdon and a number of them raided, uh, Fort, uh, William and Mary, and, um, captured guns and gunpowder there, and then some others went back, I believe, the next day, and took some more, uh, gunpowder. And some of that stuff was, the gunpowder and cannon, I think, were supposedly used at the Battle of Monket Hill, which took place later. But my, my concern was that this was a potentially very virgin, uh, piece of land that had not been looked at. Where, I mean, were there, you know, whatever? Were there, were there, uh, was there pottery? Was there, um, me- metal from buttons? Was there who knows what, coins, anything in the ground there? In perhaps one or two feet of ground. We were not talking an awful lot of ground before we hit the granite. And, um, I don't know that the contractors that tore the building down, or the ones that are there now, um, could care less about, they just wanted to get the job done, go in there, pull the bulldozers in, and take it all out. I don't know that there's another site in the historic district, um, or in the downtown area in general, that I am as concerned about, was as concerned about as that. Because most every other spot has had a nu- a series of buildings built on it over the course of time. That, as far as I know, Eagle Photo and the parking lot next door did not. The parking lot next door, um, had a, a building, again, from the, that was the, uh, initially the, the rectory, if you will, uh, of the, the, for the minister at the North Church. And, uh, that building had been changed and, and, uh, adapted over the years. But it, it burnt, um, in, in 1964. And as far as I know, nothing had, uh, prior to the construction of that building, it goes in 1954, nothing had ever been, no other building had been put on that site. So these were, as far as I know, original buildings on that site. We spend so much time, uh, at Strawberry Bank, which obviously is, is, um, you know, a museum, a different type of situation, but I, I thought that just a minimum checking of the, of the surface there may have adds, added some, some, um, knowledge to that area. Maybe there was a previous building that we never knew of, who knows? But, uh, in any case, um, if it were not, if there's no requirement for a builder who tears down a structure that goes back to perhaps the, the first building on a site, at least would it be possible for the city to, through the Historic District Commission or some other entity, uh, request that the, the builder consider, um, the, the historical or archaeological, um, aspects of both the building that's being torn down, if that's the case, or the digging into the ground at that building, just to be aware? Um, you know, was there another building that we were not aware of, that had some historical contact that was built on, that was built on top of the current one? Um, you know, simply a request coming from the city to, to consider it. Um, if, if it's not proper, or, or considered, um, the thing to do, to require anything on the owner of private property to spend the money to do anything. But at least, if it, if the, if the property owner who was undertaking, uh, the destruction of a, of a historic building, and then the digging into the ground to put a new building in, at least if he could, if he could be somehow aware of the significance, significance of that site, and at least be aware that, uh, that if he wants to take it upon himself to at least be aware that there might be something there, and that perhaps the city or the state or anyone could be of some assistance to him if he did find something and simply required them to, uh, requested them to look at it to see if it did hold any signif- uh, historical significance. And I think that's the, the gist of what I had to say. It was primarily for that site, because I don't know that there's another site in the city of Portsmouth that was as historically significant. We dug up the south end, or at least, um, Strawberry Bank area, but this was right down in our, in our current downtown. It had the Paul Revere connection, had the, the, um, the capture of Fort William and Mary connection. Um, and it seems to be, you know, it was passed and done, and the building's down, and the ground's torn up, then it's long, it's long gone. But I just thought that it, i- if there is something like that in the future, and I can't picture something of that significance right now in my head, but just have, if the city would just notify the person to be aware of it, and, and perhaps by that, he may, the, the owner may tell his contractor that if you do see something, you know, please let us know. And are there any, any questions?
Any questions?
Thanks.
Croker.
Um, I have actually two questions. Um, while I agree with you and, and your, your ideas about the potential value of the history on the specific site, Eagle Photo, I happen to live right next door to that, by the way, so I look at it every day. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm curious to know two things. Number one, what benefit would you expect to gain from having an archeo- archaeological expert on-site, A? And B, who would pay for that?
The, I suppose, at this point, anyway, I, I don't, I probably, I wouldn't request, and I don't think I did in my letter either, that a, an archeo- archaeological expert be present on-site. I mean, uh, the cost in that would be, um, something for either a governmental institution, whether it be the city or the state, or the, or the owner. It, it could be taxing on either. And, and I, I wouldn't really suggest that that be, that be the, the method to take. All I am saying is that if, if the Historic District Commission, or the city, or whoever, um, became aware that, and that a historic site was being, um, torn down and dug up, that a letter go forth, and then, and the opt, and at that point, the owner could do whatever he, when I'm not, at this point, I'm not saying that we should, that the city, the government should force the owner to do anything. All I'm saying is advise him, because I, if you have a corporation coming from out of town and doing something, they may have no, no knowledge at all, and, and, and not even particularly care. But if they were notified of it, they could do whatever they want still, but at least they would be notified of it.
So you, your premise there is just raising the consciousness...
Exactly, exactly. No, I, I mean, if I were, if I owned the property downtown, I don't think I'd want the city mandating that I had to have a, an archaeologist on-site, uh, if, if I had gone through every other, um, procedure or law or ordinance that, that had to be done just by the course of, 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 um, you know, tearing down and building a new structure. Uh, but personally, I would love, I would like to be, to be notified of it. And then I could make up my own, my own decision. And if there is any, if there was anybody that, um, any, um, again, I'm not sure the, or the ar- archaeologist would be the correct terminology, probably is. Um, you know, maybe there was someone that would, if something were found, maybe there's someone that would volunteer to come over, or maybe the state archaeologist or whoever would volunteer to come over if something of, some significance were, were found, and it, it was worth the trip or whatever to look at. Um, but, but, um, the, the advising of the owner would be my, my basic thrust of what I'm saying here tonight. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public who'd like to add comments?
Uh, William Gladhill speaking. Um, listening to your argument, it seemed that it centered more on European settlement of Portsmouth, that the dis- ordinance or suggestion include outside the historic district, where they may discover somewhere like on Peas, uh, Native American historic site, in which that should be thought of and considered.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Nope. Thank you. We need a, a motion or anything, or...
I guess we need a recommendation back to the city council, um, as to how the city should proceed.
I think what we'd sort of like to leave with the Board is probably the understanding that we do have some steps in place that do help to address this. For example, the city, when it's using federal funds for doing its streets and roadways, we have an archaeologist on-site and available to the city to make sure that these things come about. And we have to indicate the burial ground, as one example, down on Court Street. Uh, it's an example of where the system works. I would also add that in the instance of the Eagle Photo site, the owner actually did work with the, uh, HDC, so an assessment and evaluations could be made. Uh, I think what the department is concerned or wishes to advise the Board is, to what degree do you need to become involved in this at this time? Uh, do we need to get deeper in it? Or is what the city is doing right now adequate? I think the department would recommend that at this time that it's largely adequate, because when we're working in our streets, we take a look at it, when there's digging and the city's involved, we're looking at it. When you get into the private property, it gets a little more difficult, because basically the state isn't going to send an archaeologist over for free. Uh, they have just a few of those people handling the entire state. And I know, Cindy, you've had a great deal of experience in that matter, but the city is actually, I think, a very good custodian of its history.
Mr. Sullivan? I'm assuming you're not the same Sullivan.
I'll put on my tricot, coned hat, how's that? The city and the state is doing, you know, considerable, and I think that that's very acceptable, but however, I think there should be some mechanism in our system that if a historical building or a histor- known historical site is to be disturbed, that somebody ought to be looking at the first eight to 10 feet of that soil to see if there's any relics that would give us any historical background and data that's available. Uh, I, I think that's, I think that's important. I, I don't want to see it go across every piece of property in the city of Portsmouth. However, you know, if, I happen to be on the committee for the, Save the Old State House, and we're looking for a place to put it. And there are regu- federal regulations and historical guidelines and so forth, that there's a possibility that you can take down a historical building to put up another historical building. Well, if that should happen in the city of Portsmouth, and any building was taken down, I think that so many feet of that ground should be sifted and looked at for a period of time to determine there was nothing there that would give us any idea of, of background and our culture. So I think that while we're doing everything that I think is necessary at the present time, we sh- either historic district should be monitoring it, or somebody should be monitoring it, so that if that ever comes into existence, where we take down one real old historical building to put up another, or disturb the ground around any of our historical buildings and so forth, I think somebody should be there to just monitor it for a short period of time and to a certain level of depth. Uh, I don't know whether you would ever want to put something as crazy as that into an ordinance or to a regulation, but I, I think it's important. Because once that is gone, it's gone.
Yep.
And, uh...
Thank you, John.
I just feel strongly on, on that portion.
Yeah, I think that we do pretty well on the above-ground stuff. It's the subsurface. And, and with anything subsurface that has any hint of federal funds associated with it, there is the whole archaeological review under the National Historic Preservation Act, so that's well covered. I mean, spending CDVG funds in the Heights, spending coastal zone management funds on Pierce Island, all those go through the, um, State Historic Preservation Office. It's when you get to the private sector, development of private property and the subsurface there. And I think, um, as Mr. Rafferty would even agree, that so much of downtown has already been disturbed, that it's not really that big of an issue downtown. And, and the problem becomes, unless you do have an archaeologist right there, and unless the archaeologist has done a lot of research on the site, a lot of expensive research, it doesn't really help you. I, as a layperson standing there, looking at the Eagle Photo site, I could tell you nothing. There might be something very valuable, but archaeological work is so specialized, state doesn't have the resources, city certainly doesn't have the resources. So what you'd really be talking about is a good idea, but it's passing that cost back to private developers.
What I was, I was wondering if, um, if, is there any type of pamphlet or anything that we have in the department, that if somebody was doing work and they found something, that they would have a resource for them to make a phone call to maybe look into it? Is, is, do we have anything like that? And maybe that could be the solution for the private sector, that we at least have some information that if somebody did, was doing some digging, they found something? Or if we know they're going to be doing digging, and we give them the plant pamphlet to say, beware, and if you find something, call this number?
Uh, we don't really have anything that directly does that at the present time. Within the historic district, I think you've got it somewhat covered even on private property, because there is a great deal of discussion, uh, in terms of what the new project would be and how it affects the existing. Um, given that the city has been really, uh, developed over 400 years, we're really talking about throughout the city, but it might be possible to have some informational items that are available as part of a site review, just to put people on notice. I think where staff gets a little concerned is when you, is if you have to try to fund it, and how you implement it by ordinance. A voluntary program, you may be able to put some materials out there, maybe one approach.
Counselor Ferney?
Just a, a comment, because it, you know, we sit here in a meeting and try to develop a policy as a, as a planning board, and report back to the city council with a definitive answer after 30 minutes or 20 minutes, or perhaps some of us hope less, discussion. Um, and I mean that facetiously for anyone, you know, present or watching. That, you know, the, the statement that we have in there is a preliminary to review of this issue. This department, along with the Department of Public Works, will continue to evaluate how the city's processes carried out. It's pretty benign. I, I think we can do a little better than that. I share the concern that we can't add costs, we can't add staff, and it's probably unrealistic to require private, uh, property holders to have a archaeologist research every property. I think that's beyond the pale. But I do think that if we had a fact sheet available at the building inspection office and/or, uh, something available to raise the consciousness, that would be well in keeping with what is offered. And perhaps, before we make a report to the city council, perhaps staff could come up with something simple. I do not think this needs to be comprehensive. Very simple. Like, if you see an old shoe buckle, call somebody.
Call this number.
You know, uh, uh, pretty basic, and at least that's something we can do.
Just a resource.
And we would, and we would certainly invite further comment. I ju- I don't know. But, but, but very little.
Very li- I'm, I'm, I'm thinking along the same lines of a simple pamphlet, that if somebody, because I know if I was the one digging in my backyard and I hit something, I certainly would not know who to call. So if it was something, you know, if, if you can call the department and have some sort of phone number, even if that phone number is nothing more than to direct it to the state, um...
The phone number of, of Antiques Roadshow should not be on that fact sheet. But, you know, something, and it even needs to be a pamphlet, but certainly something, a sheet, an eight and a half by 11 or something.
Yeah, that's, I'm thinking along the same lines. Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah. I don't want to debate it any longer and, and keep everybody here longer, but I think that if we leave it up to individuals that find things to report things, most people are going to take that two ways. They're gonna, if they find something historical, they think it's historical, they're going to keep it themselves. Or they're going to say, my God, if I find something historical, the building on this property is going to stop, and I'll be tied up with archaeologists for the next 20 years, and they're not going to report that neither, they'll just cover it over. So, you know, you're caught in between. But I think like, our learned lawyer here says that it should be something simple that at least they report it to somebody, or somebody is aware of it for the, for the first few feet of the dig.
Maybe we can...
I don't know that I'm suggesting making it a requirement. It may be in the realm of don't ask, don't tell, but it, it is a recom- it is, we are soliciting your, your comment.
If they find something, we have an information sheet. Maybe we could, uh, recommend back to the department to come up with a very simple pamphlet, sheet of paper, of, of resource that's, if somebody found something, this is a resource sheet that could maybe help.
I'll make that motion.
I assume it also includes the other portion of it, i.e. to keep working on, uh, monitoring it and this and the other.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Croker?
Perhaps maybe I'm just an old cynical guy, but I agree with John. I've got a construction company out there and I've got hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of equipment. I've got 20 people working and somebody comes up with a rusty thing, it could be a bottle cap or it could be a shoe buckle or something. I'm going to say throw it in a can. I think where this, where the, by the way, at the risk of shutting down the project and, you know, that's just a practical dollar thing, where I think the maximum, I guess pressure would be the right word, persuasion, persuasion's a better way to do it, would be for the HDC to persuade in the nicest and least intrusive way possible for the builder, the developer, the construction company, whoever, to be aware that this may contain et cetera, et cetera, and then combine that with your brochure or something like that. I frankly don't see, the only thing you can do is count on the good nature of developers and builders and construction people and, you know, I mean, they've got a job to do and I remember sort of, in a way, sort of laughing, not at it, but sort of at the situation when Strawberry Bank was digging up their new area, their ticket center, and then all of a sudden they had to stop construction because they found old pilings. Do you remember that? It was a number of years back.
Exactly, and it still sits there.
And that's, yeah, that's the point. So I think, I think.
But because of that, they were also able to add a very interesting feature to the museum.
True, but that's a nonprofit and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. I guess my concern is just the HDC should be as persuasive as they can possibly be within the boundaries of their abilities to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Very briefly, we were discussing this earlier and I'm thinking that, yeah, if someone really is concerned about a project-stopping historical thing that they find, but there's got to be something out there for people who think about more than just a chunk of change in their project, that if there's someone out there who's building something and they see something that is historical and even if it's at risk to their own monetary gain, at least give them a chance to dial 1-800-BELTBUCKLE or whatever, just in case.
Just have an information sheet.
I'll just make one last comment, I guess, having some experience in the construction industry. I think the perception out there is if you find a shoe buckle and you bring it to someone's attention, things are going to just shut down. If there's an education process that maybe is a paragraph saying it's a voluntary thing, we will work with you, we'll try not to halt construction, I think there needs to be a paragraph or two about education because the thing is something, you know, that's historical, people will throw it away for fear of having things stopped and who pays for it, et cetera.
Would be okay with you, with the department, as they're putting this together, maybe use your expertise and help write this?
Yeah, and again, it just come down to common sense that if you were starting a project and somebody said, you got to stop, I don't know who's going to compensate you, but you're stopping, we need to educate them that that wouldn't happen.
I think you would have the most experience on this board with that type of an issue.
Certainly acceptable to the movement.
End of second. Can we call a question? All those in favor?
Aye, opposed, chair votes aye.
Sorry, John, didn't mean to put you on the phone on that one.
Oh, yeah.
All those. Mr. Rafferty, thank you very much for taking the time and effort and putting your information together and bringing this to us.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf, I appreciate it.
Moving along, the second item on the city council referrals and requests, the request of Kenneth and Deborah Smith for a license for land use beside and in back of their property located at 298 Myrtle Avenue. David?
Just indicate to you, the department is still trying to get ITSEC together on this one, so I just ask you to table it for next month.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Moving on to three, the proposed pedestrian walkway connecting Johnson Court and Junkins Avenue along the South Road Pond. Mr. Holden?
Mr. Chairman, this is a referral from the council. As the board may be aware, Guthrie and Elizabeth Schwartz approached the department, in legal department, a couple of years ago about whether or not the city might be interested in a river walk or a walkway that might connect through to Junkins Avenue from their property. Their property at one time was evidently used as a rope walk, so it's a rather significant issue. And also the lot is rather significantly shaped to demonstrate that it was once used as a rope walk. The council thought enough of the issue to send it to the board for a report back with recommendation. We've met several times with the owner and various neighbors, we're looking into the issues that they have and to the process. Effectively, what the city needs is authorization from the council that we can continue to pursue this. It implements many parts of the master plan and increases public access and there are some benefits to the residents in the area. So what we're looking for from you tonight is basically a favorable recommendation back to the council that the city's administrative staff should continue to freshen this concept out and it would be coming back to you as part, at least of a subdivision, if not some other parts. So this is very exploratory, but we do need the authorization to begin to put this into place. I would also add that the, Mr. Schwartz have signed a letter of intent that which sort of outlines what the process is and what we're looking to do is to basically start to implement that.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Moving second. Discussion on the motion? Seeing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, chair votes aye.
I just wanted to say that we thank them for coming forward, Mr. Garrett. That's a very public-minded consideration for them to bring forward.
I think this is a very exciting, everyone that's looked at it is very excited about it.
Okay, moving on to four, amended site plan review for 207 International Drive. Mr. Holden?
Actually, I have that one.
Oh, sorry.
It's, sorry, David, it's the Liberty Mutual Building on International Drive and what they're proposing to do is in the way out parking area, they're going to eliminate some of the fringe parking spaces and leave them to be installed at a later date if necessary and they're going to create a pedestrian bridge connecting the parking lots so that people don't have to walk out to the very edges and come around. They'll have a more direct access to the building. It's kind of an administrative change to the plan. We met with Maria Stoll and the engineers for the project and it looks very reasonable to do, keep a little more green space for the time being, if they need it, they can go back into that area. It was on the approved plan.
Okay. Discussion?
It's a recommendation to the PDA.
I would just add too that one of the benefits of this, the PDA and the city are working together in the Transportation Management Agency, Greater Seacoast, Greater Portsmouth. You'll be hearing more about this in the near future, but it's hoped that with these type of cooperative arrangements, there may not be the need for all this parking on each of the lots so that we can begin to develop some of the cross-connection. And so this is also a movement that way. So the PDA is viewing this as ministerial. We concurred in that and we're informing you of the same because it's using less pavement and less parking.
Okay. Is there any additional lighting or anything that has to do with the walkover bridge or any of that?
No.
Any issues? Okay. Need a motion?
Not really.
More informational?
Just more.
Okay, thank you. And our final is old business, the PDA wetlands work session at PDA.
We thought we had this pretty much scheduled, but it's difficult to get all three parties, parties being the Peas Development Authority, Town of Newington and the city together. So we're now looking at what we hope will be a date in September rather than one in August. And as soon as we have confirmation, all three parties on the location, we'll let you know, perhaps via email and also obviously our next meeting, but we've had to reschedule that date.
Okay. Going on to trivia six, the new business, discussion of possible regional impacts. Mr. Holden?
The department handed out to you a handout that's titled Presented for Consideration by the Planning Board. The department, actually DPW was able to attend it, was invited to a scoping meeting and conquered by New Hampshire DOT where they were advised of a proposal by Travelport that would make changes in their site. Those changes were deemed significant by the city. The city is working cooperatively to see that some of the traffic concerns that we have along 33 and Ocean Road will be addressed. This process is meant to further that because obviously traffic impacts is one concern in the sense too that the city provides sewer and water and there are natural resources there. What this letter is meant to do is to request the Town of Greenland Planning Board, make a finding when an application is made, that they afford the city a butter status as part of the regional impact statute. So we're looking for from you is concurrence in that so that this letter can be authorized and put out.
So moved?
Second.
Moving seconded. Discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Okay. And final is adjournment.
And pictures.
Yep, and pictures. Yeah, please. Good night, everyone, thank you, and the board members, if you could hold tight, just going to do an update here.